The March 8th, 2022, meeting of the County Board of County Commissioners. Roll call. Lou?
Oops, sorry Lou.
County Commissioners Bartlet, Best, Duffy,
Here.
Gallo,
Here.
Lapour,
Here.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Here.
Director James?
Here. Have the announcement of the open public meetings law, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement that open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting, and filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you. I want to stand for the invocation pledge of allegiance, and we're going to have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces, and have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,116 residents of Passaic County.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 22nd.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo, Lapour,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Yes.
Director James?
Yes.
GS approval of proclamations. There's three proclamations. One, two for Irishman of the year, one for the, I'm sorry, one for that, one for young Irishman of the year, and one for recognizing the 110th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA in the county of Passaic. I have a motion to approve the proclamation.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll.
County Commissioners Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Lapour,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. I'm going to turn this over to Anthony Genova, our county administrator for the administrators' report.
Thank you, Director. First on the agenda is the presentation of proclamations celebrating and recognizing the 110th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of America. I believe that we have Carmen DeCosta here. Come forward Carmen. Commissioner Lapour is going to read the proclamation to you. Do you have anybody else with you that you want to bring up?
Yes, actually I have troop number 96453.
Yeah, have him come up and stand with you.
And troop leader too as well.
Give me a second here.
Yes, I do actually. Thank you. Thank you so much for this honor. My name is Carmen DeCosta and thank you so much. My name is Carmen DeCosta. At Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey, friendship, adventure, and making a difference are what we're all about for our 17,200 girls and nearly 9,700 adult members. Through Girl Scouts, girls grow into their strongest kindness, most resilient selves, whether they're sleeping under the stars, creating the most colorful work of art, or teaming oh, sorry. Thank you so much. At Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey, friendship, adventure, and making a difference are what we're all about for our 17,200 girls and nearly 9,700 adult members. Through Girl Scouts, girls grow into their strongest kindness, most resilient selves, whether they're sleeping under the stars, creating the most colorful work of art, or teaming up with their new best friends to build a robot. Everything Girl Scouts do builds their curiosity and can-do spirit as they earn badges, help their community, and deepen their friendships. Our council believes in the power of girls, and how girls and volunteers affect positive change in our communities and the world through small acts of kindness. Acts of kindness, and through big ideas that make a lasting impact. Through the Girl Scout leadership experience, we build girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. To the Girl Scouts and volunteers of Passaic County, thank you. To the Girl Scouts and volunteers of Passaic County, thank you for the honor of this proclamation. I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you again. Thank you. Thank you to troop number 96453. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to be very honored to be able to read this proclamation for such a wonderful organization. Well, I'll read it. Pretty much covers everything here. Whereas March 12th, 2022, marks the 110th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most impactful leadership program for girls and in the world. Since its beginnings, Girl Scouts have emphasized public service, civic engagement, and fostered a sense of community in girls. The Girl Scouts works to champion the ambitious, cultivate the talents, and develop the skills of girls to confidently pursue their passions and make the world a better place. During a time when girls are experiencing increased levels of anxiety, stress, loneliness, and depression, Girl Scouts provide community, consistency, and connection with girls, and it is a safe haven for all the uncertainty. Especially in the time of COVID-19, Girl Scouts play an indispensable role in engaging girls in after-school and out-of-school programming and experiences that expand their world, allowing them to tap into their inner innovator and become changemakers and leaders. Today, more than 50 million women, trailblazers, visionaries, and leaders are Girl Scout alums who have made the world a better place. Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey serves 1,550 girls across Passaic County. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic hereby publicly recognizes the Girl Scout movement and the Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey for providing girls with safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities. Be further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to the Girl Scouts for their continued success. Thank you very much. Please accept us on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
They would like to let me know that this is what they found. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law. To be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, responsible for what I say and do, respect myself and others, respect authorities, use resources wisely, make the world a better place, and be a sister to every Girl Scout.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you so much.
We're going to take a picture with the commissioners? In fact, it's probably going to slide over
Okay.
from behind the podium here. Come on up.
That's right.
We're good? Thank you very much. Thank you everyone.
Looking forward to your report.
Well, then I went to Catholic school too.
All right. Director, next is a report from our health officer, Dr. Charlene Gungill. As we hope that we're that light at the end of the tunnel keeps getting bigger, right, Dr. Gungill? Thank God.
Whatever you want me to do.
We see the screen, so we don't mind your back.
Good evening, everyone. Today is hopefully my last evening to present to you an overview of COVID-19 for Passaic County. Pressing and it's not happening. There you go. Okay, great. So yesterday marked two years since COVID-19 has entered into our county. And during that time, we have had 127,000-plus cases in Passaic County, and these cases are individual cases. So if someone had it more than once, we only count it one time. During that time, we have lost 2,119 people due to COVID. That's a lot of people for something that is now preventable. And our first case was in the city of Clifton. It was an 18-year-old male. And our first confirmed death was in the city of Passaic, an 86-year-old male. You've seen this many, many times. This is the Epi curve, epidemiological curve. This is what the disease looks like over time in terms of number of people being sick from COVID-19. This is a synopsis of COVID-19 as far as what we have done in Passaic County in the health department. So you can see on your left, we have had 269 clinics for vaccinations. Let me back up a little bit. December 31st, 2020, we had our first clinic. It was a makeshift clinic. And since then, we have had mega sites, we've had supersites, and we vaccinated a total of 67,138 residents of Passaic County. The best news about it is that between the fully vaccinated and those who have received at least one shot, we have now vaccinated about 97% of the people who were eligible for vaccinations, i.e. the 18-plus group. With the other groups, it's a little bit different because it's a little bit harder to get the message out. But that's the good news. Regarding booster doses, we are still lagging, but the numbers are going up. And as we get more and more people getting their first vaccine, the number of booster shots have to increase as well. So that's a little bit harder to attain. Some recent COVID updates. The CDC has said as of last week that indoor masks are not necessary in areas where there is low or medium COVID-19 activity. But I want you to understand that in New Jersey, our governor has not yet lifted the executive order that says that you have to have masks indoors. And as soon as that happens, we'll be getting the word out there for all of us, because all of us are tired of using the masks. But hang in there, help is coming. This slide is a timeline of what happened in Passaic County over the last two years. You can see at the top, the one of our tents where we had our mega testing site at William Patterson University that ran for six months. And at the very end, on the right side, you could see March of last year, when Governor Murphy visited our site to see what was happening. In the bottom, you can see pictures of what the sites look like. You can see my staff and the volunteers. All the people in white are the volunteers who made all of this possible for us. And Passaic County could not have responded as we did without over 200 volunteers. So I just wanted to give you an overview of what has happened. It's two years. But I think the light is at the end of the tunnel now, and so we're just praying that people will stay safe, stay out of the hospital, and we can get back to our lives. So thank you for helping us to meet our goals and exceed our goals. And I look forward to keeping us well for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Not sure we could say it's been a pleasure for the last two years going through all of these, but I can't say it enough, Dr. Gungill, you've done a great job in protecting the county and its residents. All the health officers throughout the county have just been spectacular during these last two years. So again, behalf of the board and myself, thank you so much for everything you have done. And Director, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
All right, with, I think what we're going to do, because we have a number of people who I know want to speak here today. So rather than put it back of all of our comments, I'm going to put you up next, so we're going to we have no communications. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll.
County Commissioners Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Lapour,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera,
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. So the public portion of the meeting is now open. Anybody who would like to comment, please come up, state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
I definitely appreciate it, because I definitely want to speak to them. Commissioners, those who do not know me, which is very few on this board, my name is Ernest Rucker, Patterson, New Jersey, Passaic County. I'm here today for a particular reason, and many that you see here are here for the same reason. You all know and have heard, and Mr. Chairman, I may go maybe a minute or two, and I please ask you to give me that opportunity.
We go back a long way, so.
That's my guy. The bottom line is, there was a woman shot five times by a sheriff captain who was then promoted. That was insult, not shot by the sheriff, shot by the boyfriend, so we don't get too confused here. What my main point is, he then got promoted. Now, I understand the system of the Attorney General's office. They take these cases, they do the investigations, which I'm glad they do. My problem is, when the settlement came to this body, I need to know, and which I'm going to make sure Ms. Wahida Mohammed requests all that information. Who stopped the settlement? That's one. Did it come in front of this commission to be voted on? That's two. And I really have a very unique question to ask you. We have been supporting you guys for a lot of years, and I have done it gracefully. But I'm having a problem right now that a black woman could be shot five times by her boyfriend in front of a sheriff's officer, and then it comes back to this commission. And we find out you held up a settlement that was well due. Now, I don't know about the rest that may be here right now. We very seldom come to this meeting. But it seems to me we've made a mistake, and we need to come to this meeting more often. And I'm making this pledge today, I'm going to do just that if we keep running into things like this with that sheriff's officer or captain. And we need to know, did you guys, did you take it upon yourselves to go along with county council to deny this woman the settlement she deserved? I don't care about the $4 million price tag. I care about the five shots that were in that woman's body, and the police were there, the sheriff's department was there, and no one did anything. I've heard nothing from you guys on this. And I'm asking politely, and you know I always do this polite stuff, but I'm going to do it politely. Someone needs to give us answers on how this settlement was stopped. Who authorized it? Was the sheriff involved in it or not? We need answers. And if we can't get it through information, then we will get it when it comes up to election. See, there's two ways of getting what you want. You know, I don't even know why we've got this thing here. It is time that everyone understands the black community is tired. We're tired of giving our support. We're tired of getting nothing back. We're tired. And if we don't start seeing some producing when it comes to our issues, we will show you in November. Now, I'm not going to go no further, because see, when I talk too much, I get mad, and then I say the wrong thing, which I purposely do. But the bottom line is this. You have to give us answers if you want this thing to die down in any kind of form or fashion. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, everybody. Zelli Thomas, Patterson, New Jersey, organizer for Black Lives Matter Patterson. When we were younger, we were constantly being told that the police are here to protect and serve. We were told that increased police presence in our communities is good for us because it deters crime. While policing protects and serves some people, it doesn't protect all people. While policing may protect some communities, it also harms other communities as well. In January 2018, in the presence of a Passaic County sheriff's officer, it did not deter Tashelle Jackson's abuser from additionally shooting her multiple times. That presence of the officer did not deter the crime from happening. As she escaped from the car and ran towards that officer for help, she ran towards that officer for help and did not receive any help. He did not stop and arrest the abuser and potentially could have prevented a potential additional crime from happening. He did nothing. And instead of being held accountable, he was promoted. Instead of being held accountable, he was promoted. Instead of the board recognizing the faults of that officer, recognizing the faults of the sheriff's department, they ignored it and decided to promote this officer, while at the same time trying to dismiss the lawsuit of Tashelle Jackson. Why would you try to dismiss this lawsuit of her? You have to do the moral thing and not always try to do the most legal thing or the most political thing, but the moral thing. When we say Black Lives Matter, it's just not a hashtag, it's just not a fancy slogan. We have to deeply believe that black lives matter. And if you believe that black lives matter, you have to believe that Tashelle Jackson's life matters as well. And if you believe that her life matters, you have to recognize that something awful happened that day. Something awful. We know the abuse was awful, but also the fact that there was a police officer there, and he did not do what he was supposed to do, that's inexcusable. We cannot excuse this and promote officers when they do harm. We cannot continue to do this. We cannot promote an officer and then hope that he can retire one day and then get a higher pension. We demand that he is fired. We demand that he is terminated. We also demand that you install a civilian complaint review board, because we do not trust the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office for doing investigations, and we do not trust the Passaic County Sheriff's Department for doing their own internal investigations. We need a strong, independent board, and we hope that this board in front of us today will take the first steps to installing that civilian complaint review board for the Passaic County. Thank you.
Good evening. Case on little with Black Lives Matter Elizabeth, state of solidarity Black Lives Matter Patterson. We're calling for the firing of that officer. He should have been terminated that same day when he aided and abided to an attempted murder situation that we didn't even know what could have led to. But we're here to serve and protect, right? While we're sitting there and not intervening, not saving someone's life when it was put at risk, didn't even know what the hell was going to happen, and yet you get a promotion. Just hear that part. So just let me turn it back to you. So just say if your wife was there, well, you know, it would be different because I mean, if most of you are white, right? But just say if a black woman that you knew or just say loved, right? Was there. And Tashelle was there. And an officer was near that situation where she was shot five times, and he turned his damn back like nothing happened. But what happened if that shot was to her chest? And she dies right in front of him and pronounced dead on the spot? You would still promote him? He still goes home to his family, hug his kids, his wife, whoever the f- he is, because I'm not here to be nice. I'm not. Because she could have passed away that day. But I rejoice in the fact that she's alive, that she's still amongst the land of the living. And her purpose is not over. So it's about remedying pain, remedying trauma, and remedying suffering into place. And what you do today will speak to that same thing. Your silence will be violence. If you don't act with it, we will take that as if you don't care. Right? Saying we call for investigations is not enough. What type of procedures, protocols, policies, and precedents that you will be sponsoring into place that will protect the black community? into place that will protect the black community and your county? Her lives matters, but all black lives matter. Like it was stated, it's not just a slogan, it's not just a hashtag, it's not to say for fun so y'all can get reelected like y'all put the damn morals in the streets in this county and, you know, come out here and do photo ops of black folks, yeah, with our fists up. This is not no seasonal fight. It's a long-term fight. And as long as black people in this country are being gunned down by police at a disproportionate higher rate than white people, we will continue to see that because we don't want just a piece of this earth, we want the whole earth like you're subjected to receive. Because our black babies go from being age 14 through a threat in the eyes of law enforcement. Yes, I have a problem with that. So while that officer sat there and allowed that to happen and did nothing, not even arrest him, but be promoted. This is why we call for abolition, because the system continues to abuse and let down black people time and time again. And you think black people are supposed to have hope in a system like this? Absolutely not. Because there's not one voice on here who's going to say, wait a minute, he needs to be fired. But that's that. And I won't hold my breath for that either because we know how this all works. We're well in tune with how this works, and we're organizing against it because we want to live. We're worthy, and we want to be accepted in the world, forget a world, in the county, in our own communities that has never valued black life. So it's about what you do right now to remedying pain, trauma, and suffering, both that goes unseen and unheard of and seen and heard of. And in this case, it was seen and it was unheard, and it was heard of. And he sat there and done nothing, clear as day, broad daylight, but he gets the damn He needs to be fired right now. Officer Atkins needs to be fired right now. And somebody could do that with a stroke of a pen. But we'll find out who can do that, and we'll come back and report. But until then, we want you to come to the defense of black people and specifically come to her defense because she needs justice. And thank God we can say we have the opportunity to get justice and not accountability because she's still alive. This is not a deadly situation here, could have been. He also could have participated in that because he sat there and done nothing. So in that scenario, who he served and protect? He didn't protect her, he did not serve her because he did not once intervene. And no arrest was made. So that brings me to my next question. Who did this guy know, right? Did he, was he in great communication with the freeholders board that he knew, oh, if I could not protect this black woman, I would still have my job, right? Did he campaign for y'all politically? You see, that's how politics work. I scratch your back, you scratch mine. Pay to play. And if you knock on the doors and vote column A for me, I'm going to make sure you get your job, your wife get a job, your cousin get a job, hell, your dog might be promoted to, um, chief of K-9. Because that's how this works here. And it's disgusting because we don't put black people first. We don't put people who are mostly and directly impacted first, mistreated and neglected first, and undervalued first. So I have a problem with that. And I expect you, and I don't expect, I demand you to legislate on a mandate and full defense of black lives and a full defense of Tashelle's life right now. I yield back.
This is not easy because, as you all know, I was here back then when that incident happened. And I said to all of you that I knew in my heart that you had to have felt something to hear that story. But maybe I was wrong because nothing has been done except for promotion of the individual that sat there and allowed that person, who could have been my child, could have been me, and nothing happened except for promotion. And now that individual, from what I understand, is in charge of the county courthouse. So no justice for anybody that comes in that he feels don't deserve it because he's already demonstrated that. And what do we do now? See, and I'm looking at all of you, and I've looked at your faces a long time. And I remember when I retired, Commissioner Laporte, you were at my retirement, and you said, when I come in that door, you look at my face to see whether or not I'm here to congratulate you or to tell you off. And I'm telling you tonight, my face represents anger, it represents sadness as well as hurt because I still can't believe that you all did nothing but promoted this guy. And then when I talked to someone that said to me, and this really blew my mind, but he was in line, there was nothing, we couldn't do anything else because he was in line for the promotion. A damn promotion is not simple service. You don't have to promote somebody because they're next in line. So I'm saying to all of you, and that's why erasers was invented, because we make mistakes and it allows you to correct something. This needs to be corrected. Because that young woman, and we are saying thank God that she's not physically dead, but part of her died that night. She will never have the life that she had back then. Bullets that went in her body. Think about it five times. And nothing has been done but a promotion? Are we serious? And when I was told that this happened, I was like, not those people that I thought I knew would allow that to happen. Because I really felt that your heart was in the right place. But when I hear that this person got a promotion after watching this woman almost lose her physical life, but has truly lost most of her mental life, because you can never feel safe anymore, not sitting and seeing an officer and nothing happens but a promotion. But what does she get? When you were going to be able to do something right and give her a little bit of relief, you decided, no, we're not even going to do that. We're going to give him a promotion that over his time will lend him $4 million. But you couldn't give it to her, but you gave him a promotion. Do you ask yourself why? Do you even ask yourself why did that happen? And I don't know, Commissioner Laporte, reading your faces, I don't know what the hell to think. Because you said you could read mine, but I don't know what to think about your faces tonight. Some of you I can read because it's always been that same face, but some of you I thought had a different heart that I really thought would have made some difference to this woman. But I have been told this man got a promotion and she gets nothing because now it's being flipped and flopped every which way. But go home and think about what you would have done, how you would feel if it was your wife, your daughter, your mother. But I can tell you, as they said about the so-called President Trump, the guy said, you keep asking, what can we do? The guy said, if it had been Obama, what would you have done? So do that. So if this officer would have been us, trust and believe, he would not be sitting in the county courthouse. He'd have been sitting in the county jail. And you all know that. So excite yourself and do something different and do the right thing and do what's best. Follow your name, Commissioner. Do what's best. This is not it. So I want you to know, we're here tonight, but God knows, as long as he give me health and strength, I'll be back. This is not over. This is not over. Commissioner James, you know I called you any and every time, and you always answer. I'm telling you all, I want answers. Got to. This can't continue because it makes me think that you care nothing about us. Because see, it could have been B. Still can, if we'll allow people to be promoted when they've done something like this. What does that say to other officers? Can't continue. Pick up the eraser and fix this.
Anyone else?
Seeing no one at the podium, I moved closer to the portion.
There's a second. County Commissioners Bartlet, Best, Duffy, Gallo, Laporte, Deputy Director Lazar, Director James.
Wahida, uh, we're friends for a long time. I'm deeply disturbed by the whole incident and will be for the rest of my life. There's some things that we can't control. The man didn't work for us. We're not the appointed authority. We didn't promote, we can't fire, um, and we had no formal proposal from the courts to settle a case. I can assure you, if there was one, we would have taken it seriously because it's in the courts and not because of us. The young woman, rightfully so, got a lawyer to sue. So wherever that is in the courts at the moment, we're just waiting for that to get to us. If there's a settlement recommended, uh, I for one will support it. But we have not had anything before us to recommend anything at the moment, not from her lawyer, not from the courts, not that we've been, it's not been shared with us. You brought up some points, uh, some people brought up some points about a review board. I personally have no problem with that because it worked well in New York City. Review board worked well in New York City. It's not that incidents don't happen in New York City, they still happen in New York City, but at least there's a civilian review of what happens, and there's nothing wrong with a civilian review. You're the civilians. So all of that, we're going to discuss, uh, but I can assure you, we are as disturbed as you, Wahida, about any of this that happened, uh, your lives, everybody's lives, but your lives do matter and will always matter. I've been around this city since 1968. I took $5,000 of student money in William Patterson College and funded what was told to me was the Black Panther Breakfast Program in Patterson. Someday I'll tell you that story. Uh, it eventually went to the group that was doing that, uh, that breakfast program because they were feeding kids that couldn't get a decent meal. So you know where my head has been at for my entire life. I can assure you that the people that are sitting up here that I know has the head in the, in the, in the correct place. I think we're going to listen to what you said tonight and take some affirmative steps to make things better. That's what I can promise you, I can tell you where I'll be on that. I think that TJ will be there, I think that Terry and Pat will be there, I think that's, I think all of us will be there. You made your point very well tonight. Zelli, uh, you're, you're a hero to me, I've told you that many times. So we're going to make sure that we have some response to this that's appropriate for the community because that's where we live. We're in the same community. Don't think we're separate because we're not. Every day when we wake up, the Lord put us all here for a reason, and that reason has got to be to serve others. That's it. Otherwise, what are we doing here? No, because that violates what we do with the public. Yeah, go ahead. No, he's a sheriff's department, there's no, he's not a county employee. No, we're a separate, uh, appointing authority completely. Because it's a constitutional office. Sheriff, surrogate, they're all constitutional offices. We do not do the hiring and firing in those units, it's up to them. Anyway, we're going to move on, but you have my word, Wahida. I'll keep you as informed as I can, all of this community. You've always been there for me, and I'll always be there for you. And I think I speak for our entire board. I don't know where the legal stuff goes. We certainly can't intervene for that without making it worse. So, uh, we're going to let that run its course, but we will do the right thing. Oh, fine. I know, I know you watch. All right, uh, so we're here at the consented, oh, I'm sorry. So it's time for the, the Commissioner reports. I'm going to be very brief. Uh, we have a resolution that I'm going to ask Sandy Lazar, my deputy, to read into the record. Friday, we're going to have a prayer service and a rally for the, uh, people. All right, uh, do you want us to take a five-minute break? I mean, is there some reason why? You guys, if you want to leave, if we're interrupting you, uh, we'll give you. Oh, okay. I'll see you later. So we're holding a rally here and prayer service on Friday from 11 o'clock until 12:30 to support the people of the Ukraine that are fighting off, uh, basically of somebody who's a baby killer, uh, you know, and violates, uh, every war ethic code that he possibly can. Uh, I'm going to have Sandy Lazar read, uh, what will be a, a light starter from our county council's office, and I'll let her get to that when we get there. Sandy, you have anything to add to that right now, or you want to just wait?
You want me to read it now?
No. This is, yeah, for your report. You have anything you want to add to the report for yourself?
No, it's, it's really, um, it's concise, it's to the point, and it's just, uh, speaks to the way we all feel about what's going on in the Ukraine.
Right, so when Matt adds that, I'm going to ask you to read that into the record, and then you can make whatever comments on that you want, okay? All right, uh, Commissioner Bartlet.
And a happy birthday to you, we share the same birthday, so happy 50th birthday, Bartlet.
Who's 50th birthday? Okay, I didn't say it. All right, Commissioner Best. No report. Commissioner Duffy.
Uh, very little to report. I'd just like to, uh, thank, uh, all the, uh, well wishers and prayers that people have, uh, extended. thank, uh, all the, uh, well wishers and prayers that people have, uh, extended to my family. It's helped us quite a bit. And I just want a shout out. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Terry. Commissioner Gallo, look, I didn't get, I didn't forget.
You didn't miss me this time. I thank you. But I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
At least I gave you the opportunity.
Yes, you did.
And Pat Laporte, Commissioner.
Thank you, Director. My committee produced, uh, 10 resolutions, uh, for my colleagues' review and asked for their support.
Okay. Matt, do we have any late starters?
Director, yes, we have one late starter, uh, L-44 Resolution in Support of Ukraine and Its Defense Against Unprovoked and Unjustified Attacks From the Russian Army. That is it. No need for executive session and no amendments.
All right, do we have anybody who is planning on voting no on any of our resolutions?
Yes.
Which number, sir?
Uh, number 17, please.
Okay. So I'm pulling 17. It'll be a vote after we vote on the rest of the consent agenda. I, I was told 17. Which is it?
Yep, 17 it was. Right, Commissioner?
Yes, 17.
Okay.
Correct.
So that will be pulled. I want, can I have a motion to add the late starter, which will be L-what? Matt?
Make that motion.
44?
Yes, L-44.
All right, can I have a motion to add L-44?
Move it.
All right, so on adding L-44, roll, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Best, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Laporte,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro,
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. All right, can I have a motion on the consent agenda for one through 16 and 18 through 44? I'm sorry, let me do that. I'm sorry, Sandy. I, I I want Sandy to read the resolution that was a late starter, uh, which has to do with, uh, what we're planning on doing with the crisis in the Ukraine.
Thank you, Director. So this resolution may sound very formal, but it does sum up a lot of the feelings and the thoughts and the prayers we have for the people of the Ukraine and for everyone who's out there helping them. So if you'll just indulge me for a moment. The resolution is in support of Ukraine in its defense against unprovoked and unjustified attacks from the Russian army. Whereas the county of Pesake is a body politic and corporate pursuant to NJSA 4018-1 invested with all rights contained therein. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Pesake is vested with managing the property, finances, and affairs of the county. Whereas on February 23rd, 2022, United States President Joseph Biden released a statement pledging support of the people of Ukraine as, and this is in quotes, "they suffer an unprovoked and unjustified attack by Russian military forces." Whereas on March 2nd, 2022, the United Nations General Assembly approved a resolution reaffirming Ukraine's sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity and demands Russia immediately, completely, and unconditionally withdraw all of its military forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. And whereas since Russia's unprovoked attack on Ukraine, there are numerous substantiated reports of indiscriminate assaults on civilian targets and infrastructure in an impending humanitarian crisis. And whereas, led by the Ukrainian President Volodymyr Zelensky, the Ukrainian people and its army are bravely and heroically defending their country and their right to self-governance and independence. And whereas, a coalition of Western democracies, democracies led by the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, European Union, United Nations, and United States of America imposing crippling economic sanctions on Russia and mobilize military and economic support of Ukraine. And whereas Pesake County is home to a large Ukrainian dispora who contribute in numerous ways to our community and economy and for whom the Board is organizing a prayer vigil and rally on February, on Friday, March 11th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. at the Pesake County Courthouse Plaza to demonstrate the broad support for Ukraine and its people as it defends itself against the unprovoked and unjustified attacks from Russia. Therefore, let it be resolved pursuant to NJSA 4020-1 that the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Pesake, condemns the unprovoked and unjustified, did I read this? Attacks by the Russian army against Ukraine and pledges its support to President Zelensky and the Ukrainian people as they defend their right to self-governance and independence. Let it be further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners supports the efforts by the North Atlantic Treaty Organization, European Union, United Nations, and United States of America in imposing economic sanctions on Russia and its financial and military support to Ukraine. Let it be further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners invites the residents of Pesake County to show its solidarity with the Ukrainian people and join a prayer vigil and rally on Friday, March 11th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. at the Pesake County Courthouse Plaza to demonstrate the broad support for Ukraine and its people as it defends itself against the unprovoked and unjustified attacks from the Russian army. Let it be further resolved that the clerk of the Board shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the governing bodies of the 16 municipalities in Pesake County, all federal representatives of Pesake County, the Secretary of Defense, Secretary of State, and President Joseph Biden. Let it be further resolved the county administrator and all appropriate county personnel are hereby directed and authorized to take all action to aid the Ukrainian people and the large Ukrainian dispora living in Pesake County in response to the humanitarian crisis being caused by Russia for its attack on Ukraine as necessary. And so those words, "unprovoked and unjustified attack on those poor people." We stand here in solidarity with them and we hope and pray that this small measure does something to help what's going on over there. That's it.
Okay. Now can I have a resolution approving L-1 through 16 and L-18 through L-44?
Move it.
There a second?
Second.
Roll.
Uh, Bartlett, second. County Commissioners Bartlett, Best, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Laporte,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro,
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Can I have a motion on L-17?
And Director, for matter of record, we're actually gonna make it L, M-44 to fit into the agenda, which is items removed from the consent agenda. So we'll make it M-
That's new, right?
Yes, that is new.
Before the meeting, Lou, that would have been helpful, but all right.
I apologize, Director.
So it's M what?
M-44.
M-44. Okay. Have a motion to vote on M-44.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Best, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Laporte,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro, Director James.
Yes. Have a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
Move it.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Best, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Laporte,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro,
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, and before I do bills, is there any new business that has to come before us? All right. Okay, then can I have a motion on the bills list, please?
Move it.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Best, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Uh, Laporte,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro,
Yes.
Director James.
And can I have a motion for adjournment?
Move it. Second.
Roll.
We just.
This is for adjournment.
Yes, I know, Director.
Well, yeah, don't worry about it. For the record, it'll be corrected that M-44 is actually M-17.
Okay. I apologize. Slight error.
Uh, County Commissioners Bartlett, Best, Duffy,
Yes.
Gallo,
Yes.
Laporte,
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro,
Yes.
Director James.
Yes.